Welcome to the Pterrow Select Board meeting for Tuesday, December 7th, 2021. I'm Tyler Ward. Along with me are fellow Select Board members Bill Kennedy and Bill Taylor. We have the Department of, wait, the DBW Director and Assistant Town Administrator Seth McLean. Got that right? And Ellie Kreutz is here in a minute for us. And on our agenda this evening, we'll hear from Zach Pate from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation regarding the Route 101 Bridge Reconstruction Project. I don't know if anybody's noticed, but we have another bridge starting pretty soon. And at 5:30, you'll hear from Aaron Lechance. I'm sure some people remember Aaron with Hoyle and Tanner regarding the Main Street Bridge and an update on that. We're all excited that that's getting closer to being passable. We were going to discuss with the EDA about a Housing Subcommittee regarding affordable housing, but we're going to postpone that at the request of members of that committee until our next meeting or later meeting. So if anybody is here for the Affordable Housing Subcommittee, we are going to postpone that until maybe probably January. And then we'll hear from, I think Julie Zimmer is here to discuss the New Hampshire Business for a Path to Citizenship request. And then we'll review and possibly approve some minutes from November 16th and the 23rd. We are filming. We're live tonight on Ustream via the town's website, Comcast Channel 22, and also on the Ustream. YouTube? YouTube. Yeah. All right. So if anybody has any questions or when you do request dispute, just please say your name for this. All right, Zach, welcome.
All right, thank you. What do you want me over there or over here? Do you guys like? We've got cameras on.
All right.
So this is the guy that's starting a new bridge?
I'm the guy. It's all falls on my shoulders.
So here was this guy.
So hello. My name's Zach Pate. I work for the New Hampshire DOT, and I'm going to be the Contract Administrator on the New Hampshire 101 Bridge nearby to you guys' other bridge. So I'm just here tonight to give a little overview for the board members about what we're going to be doing out there and a general timeline and what our plan is. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yep.
All right. So project number is 15879. It doesn't really matter, but that's our number. And for the bridge replacement and widening. But so everybody probably knows where it is. There it is, over the Kentucky River. This here is Granite Street. Up to your other bridge, there's the Ocean State Job Lot Plaza. Project's being done by ED Swett of Conca, New Hampshire. It's about an $8.5 million project. And when the bridge is done, it will be 62 feet wide and 180 feet long, sitting on a single pier in the middle, whereas the current one is two. This view here is basically standing in the Ocean State Job Lot Plaza, looking at the bridge.
How much wider is it than the existing bridge? Are you going to get to that?
Um, I actually don't have the existing width on it. This is about the existing bridge. It, uh, it basically has a sidewalk to the bridge on one side of the road, so it's basically the width of the sidewalk. It's probably eight, eight or 10 feet wider.
Cool.
And so.
Which side of the road is the sidewalk?
It is on the westbound side. So it'll, it'll, yes. It'll, it ties into the first driveway on Granite Street and wraps around and ties into the existing sidewalk over by the Shell Station.
Right. That is true.
And so this is just a few numbers about the existing bridge. It was built in the late 50s, early 60s. You guys probably know better than I do. I just know the plans were dated in 1958. Steel gutter bridge with a concrete deck, 36-inch, three-foot-deep beams, six-and-a-half-inch concrete deck, three spans with two, two piers, like I discussed earlier, and two abutments on each end. And then the piers are supported by driven piles, like a steel H-pile or I-pile. And they're about 45 feet down bedrock. And the abutments are supported by traditional concrete footing and wing wall sort of setup. This is just a kind of one of the old bridge plans showing the, uh, the piles in the, one of the existing abutments. So it shows that the pile goes all the way through the abutment, you know, down through the riverbed material to bear on bedrock. The new bridge has been designed since 2012, so it's been floating around for a while. The steel garters are similar size, 36 inches, with a slightly thicker concrete deck overall because we're allowing for precast panels as part of the deck structure. This is something that the state of New Hampshire has gotten into a lot recently. And contractors like it because it speeds up the bridge process. The bottom panel is three-and-a-half-inch thick, uh, deep, and approximately a six-by-six-foot wide block of reinforced concrete. And those act as the bottom structure of the deck and also to stand, uh, place formwork. So it speeds up that sort of process. Uh, like I said, two spans with a central pier. And the new pier will be supported by drilled shafts. The next slide I'll talk about what exactly a drilled shaft is. And then Abutment A, which is the western side of the bridge, will also be supported by drilled shafts, and Abutment B will be on driven piles. So, uh, this is a elevation of the pier. And so this shows the pier cap that the bridge garters will sit on. And this here is your drilled shaft. And a drilled shaft is effectively, actually, if you go to the next page, a reinforced concrete column or a really big sonotube. Whereas instead of a cardboard tube, you have a steel casing. In this case, it's about a six-foot diameter steel casing. And a hole in the earth is bored out, the drill rig, very similar to the one that Hug had here. That one may come back, actually, because we have that again.
They're familiar with that.
Just keep it on.
And so hole's bored out, the casing's driven into it, and then it's filled back up with concrete and rebar. So getting on to what you're probably more interested in is the phasing and the traffic kind of setup we're going to have out there. This is a cross-section of the current bridge. And this shows this little section here, about 13 feet wide. This is the portion that we're going to remove to start building the new bridge. And so this is going to leave, if you go to the next slide, oh, uh, let's go, let's go forward one more. We'll go back to it. It is going to leave here two lanes over the bridge. And so one lane either direction. You will lose the designated left-turning lane headed eastbound onto Granite Street. But there will be two-way traffic consistently through both phases of construction. Now, if you go back, please.
The existing, um, uh, traffic lights?
Yes.
In that intersection, those will remain?
So not those specific ones. And I'll talk about it later, but there will be a new set of traffic lights set up there.
Okay, because it's going to be an issue of, of course, you know, it's going to be an issue of traffic turning left to go on to proceed on 202.
Correct.
Incoming traffic coming from the east on 101.
Right.
There's going to be, so unless there's traffic control there, it's going to be a mess.
Oh, no, there, there's going to be traffic control there. Um, we've actually already adjusted those existing traffic signals, um, for the new configuration.
I noticed.
And, uh, we, so we've adjusted those, and we, um, have come up with some new, well, the new phasing for the lights so that, uh, you know, you'll have, you'll have protected left turn at the beginning of that phase. So you'll have green forward through, green left. Uh, and then after, I believe it's 15 seconds, I think it changes based on demand, um, it will go to a flashing yellow to allow for a left turn if there's no traffic coming down the hill. And then eventually there will be a red there. It may be a flash, a flashing yellow consistently if it's green headed east, and then it'll swap when something comes out of Granite Street. I think that it will be all right, just based on what I've seen out there. Like when we were doing our traffic shifts through our striping, we were out there all day and we were playing in traffic, you know, and, um, we definitely had things backed up, but I think that it showed promise of that it would work out. Other than that, some changes that we've made, we should probably have seen. We shortened the dual-use turning lane in front of the Ocean State Job Lot Plaza. That's temporary. That will go back to its current configuration when we're done with it. We removed the raised island on Granite Street and shifted the lanes over. That island will go back in a similar manner. Adjusted signals. We closed the multi-use trail under the bridge temporarily while we're working there. And then scheduled for December 15th is, uh, removal of that left-turn lane on the bridge and replacement of our temporary concrete barriers. Will be the phase, the beginning of Phase 1. So like I showed on here, um, this little chain sort of diagram represents the concrete barrier. You know, it begins just after the exit, the Ocean State Job Lot Plaza, onto the road, around and up to the first drive, the shell given contract from Golden. And then this shows shift the traffic over there, remove the island. And then most of the striping on the eastern side stays similar. We removed the, one of the yellow lines for the gore to shift traffic over, but rest of it's about the same. And then Phase 2 will be the same, but opposite, walk over to the other side of the road and place two lanes of traffic on the new portion of the bridge that we built. And then just showing just that, Phase 2, both lanes on this side, and demo that old section of the bridge, build a new section over there. And then when we're all done, like I said, that dual-use lane was put back where it is. A new narrower island on Granite Street. Some flush medians on the eastern side of the bridge, which is going to take the same place of that centerline gore. Actually, if you go to the next page quickly, oh, one more. That median is like a printed sidewalk. It is effectively what looks like a brick herringbone pattern in a, in a red. So it will give the illusion of separation between the two lanes, even though you can still drive over for people getting out of those driveways and such. Go back two for me, Seth. And then, like I said, some new sidewalks, permanent traffic signals, and small road range improvements. And, oh, I guess we can look at that quickly. Island here is a little narrower and shorter than it was originally, so traffic will be pushed over into the middle a little bit. The left-hand traffic turning lane comes back. That gore stays basically where it was. There's our little raised island. I believe there's our flush island. I believe there's two that are up the road. And then here's your sidewalk, the driveway around that way.
Did you say that the sidewalk is going to go as far as the existing sidewalk up Granite Street?
Yes, uh, it's going to go right to that, that driveway right there.
Okay. But there's, there's a section of Granite Street currently that doesn't have a sidewalk on it.
Correct.
But that'll be continuous now, after this is stopped?
No, so there still will be no sidewalk past this driveway. So our, our limits of Granite Street are exactly what you see right there. Um, there's an existing pavement joint there, um, between the driveway on the left and the next driveway on the right. That's as far as we go.
So that's a sidewalk for one house?
And to, and to get people to cross the bridge as well. They allow width on the bridge for people to cross over the bridge if they're headed that direction.
But then they're ducked into traffic at the other side of that driveway.
All right.
Probably like it is right now, where you get, if you're headed north, you come around the corner and then until you get up over the grave by the purple house and back down till you get to the sidewalk again, where you get those two pull-off areas, that's where the sidewalk ends now. So you'll have from there all the way to where Cough Hall parks his stone truck.
I think that, I'm not a design engineer, so I don't have an intimate knowledge of what the state's plan is for sections of road at any given time. The section that we're speaking of there is already extremely narrow, and I think in order to build a sidewalk in there, you may need to make, do some major reconstruction work on the side of the road, possibly take some land, properties, to get that width. I believe that's why it's kind of out of the scope of this bridge project.
Well, you'll put it in your notes, but that's something the town would like to see.
I can definitely do that.
That'd be great, please.
Yep, can definitely do that.
Because no sense dumping people into traffic. I mean, what, why put all that money into a sidewalk that goes from one house to a gas station?
Kind of like the roundabout?
Well, the idea, yeah.
I do believe that that roundabout was proposed by the town and approved by the state. I'm not extremely intimate, intimate with that either.
At any rate.
Yeah. Uh, so, next one, please. All right, there's the median. Uh, just a few other things we're going to be doing. New 12-inch water line from effectively grocery to Granite Street across the bridge. We're going to freshen up the conduit and wiring on that shared-use pathway since we're going to make a mess out of it in the meantime. New bridge and roadway guardrails to the section, new lighting at the intersection, some additional sidewalk tip-downs at the 101 grocery intersection. And then our paving limits will be basically from the grocery intersection up the hill to the existing paving joint when they overlaid two years ago, I believe, and about a few quarters way down the hill past the Blunkin' Yellow Light. So I believe we're tying into that joint. And, oh yeah, here's the overall schedule. So ED Swett plans to work year-round. Uh, when we drop our barrier on the 15th, they're going to, surely they have to begin demolition work on the section of the bridge we have quartered off. And, uh, I think that's planning to be done in March and in February, they're going to start working on the drill shafts. Uh, so Phase 2 traffic shift should be in October of next year, sometime for winter. And then planning to be finished the following October of 2023. These days may change, give or take, but the bridge will be open for traffic before the winter of 2023, in a full capacity.
Great, only two more years.
And then in closing, just I ask everybody, just when you're in and around, just be cautious. Just watch out for that work. If it's not being attention, it wanders out. I appreciate that. And we do understand that when you're in your town, where you drive to work every day, we are in your way, and we are going to do our best to get the project done as quickly and also safely as possible. So when you see us out there, don't swear at us, just grumble if you need to. Appreciate that. If anybody has any questions or issues now or ongoing, I can answer them for you now. Or you write down my email address. That's a good way to get me. I'll do my best to answer you quickly.
Seth?
Yes, go ahead.
I think he was going to suggest that Zach and I work together.
Yeah, I was going to say, or, you know, you can go through.
Sure. Zach and I had a meeting with all the contractor, uh, subcontractor safety folks, our fire and police personnel months ago, so we do have the right contacts here within the town house. If there's ever a need from the public, you can sort of reach out to me as well. I can help put in touch with the correct person on their end.
So do you have any other additional questions, Lauren?
Sure. So I noticed that quite a few trees were cut down.
Yes.
To prepare for this.
Yes.
Big trees. There's a nice big screen of trees. What are the plans for plantings to maybe mitigate that expanse of?
There are plans for replanting. I can get very in-depth for you, actually, here. But there are plans to replant specifically, um, in between the Ocean State Job Lot and the highway, that stretch of trees right there. And I believe there are also some to be planted at the bottom of the hill, um, on the eastern side of the bridge, where kind of that large clearing area was. Some of that slope, well, that was taken because the road is widening on that side. And so in order to build our slope line back down and armor the slope.
Most street needs very well.
But there, there is a planting scheme.
To replace with some, some new trees.
Good to hear. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I have one quick question. What is that platform that you built on of, uh?
101. So that, um, yeah, I'll, basically off of the, the parking lot where the pedestrian path is right there, that's just a stone access causeway so that the trains can get out, well, basically where it helps drill, where it can drive out onto that and reach the central pier to do the drill work they need to do.
Just curious.
Yep.
Anybody in the audience have any questions for Zach? Great, well, thanks for the presentation. It was good and thorough. Appreciate that you started a new bridge.
Hey, you know, just think about it. In a couple of years, it'll be done, and then you'll get to wait probably 50 more until somebody has to be back to work on it again.
I should live some more.
Unless, unless you want to talk about the one that you said, which is right after that one.
Right.
You said two more years. So you said we can't swear at you, or was it the workers?
Well, if you swear at the workers, they might swear back at you, so.
Yeah, well, I don't think anybody wants to give them a mark. I think people should still be all sorry.
I've got broad shoulders, so I, I'd appreciate if you didn't swear, but if you have an issue, come to me, I'll do what I can.
All right.
If you're nice to me, I'll be nice to you.
I just wanted to say thank you, just a little bit of back information. This project came up on us quick, but the state was, uh, willing to work with us on their Phase 1 traffic shift. They wanted to do it earlier, but given our bridge project, they were willing to push their date back a little bit. Obviously, everybody knows construction windows up until last year and a half. We had it a little bit tight. People were worried about labor costs, material costs. And I want to say thank you on behalf of the town for being willing to work with us on your Phase 1 traffic to help mitigate our downtown traffic.
You're welcome. We, we're neighbors here, so we like to do what we can.
I have one question, Kathleen Allen, before. Why did we not wait until this bridge was done? Because now it's going to open supposedly in the next few days in one way. And I'm like, is it out of Main Street or into Main Street? Because I can't picture traffic cops standing there. Why are we jumping on the other bridge before this one got done?
So I can answer part of that, Kathleen, the, the state's side of it. I can tell you, like, as I mentioned earlier, this project has been in the works since 2012. And so there are matters of funding and other scheduling and, actually, it's, it's majorly funding because this is majorly federally funded. And so there are certain windows in which you need to spend the funds. And so if we were to push this project back to, say, in the next spring, um, we'd lose the opportunity to use some of that money. And so that's why the state couldn't wait, especially because we already had a contractor who had bid on this project, with bid prices. Um, and so if we were to push the project back another year, that would cause additional cost escalation and really just a lot of paperwork and scheduling messes.
I understand that, but we have two dysfunctional bridges at the same time.
Well, hopefully, we won't be so dysfunctional. I can't make any promises on that, but, uh, we're going to work together, I think, to, to minimize traffic, you know, issues as much as we can between the two projects and...
So we got some good news on that, which myself and Aaron, Aaron's going to drive this next presentation, but we've got some news on that. And as I mentioned, um, the state will work with us on the opening of our, at least the four, sort of two-lane opening of our bridge, even though it's not done, to, in order to help mitigate that issue. I think there's been a lot of cooperation.
Don, did you have something to add?
I was going to say, the longer you wait, the more it's going to cost you. And if you put it off, you may not be able to get the money you wanted, and then all of a sudden, is it not going to happen, or who's going to foot the bill? I under, I am assuming this is all federal-state, not any money from the town?
Correct, yes. There's, there's no funding from the town to beat up our own this project.
So don't look the gift to us and you know.
Right.
I just want to say thank you. I'm glad it's starting. I don't, I mean, I understand the frustration with it being overlapping, but just get it done. And I applaud your presentation and being here tonight. I look forward to it.
Well, thank you. We're going to do our best.
You don't have the, the misfortune of the benefit of having a pandemic which felt, which affected our businesses, so you have to make sure your bridge project doesn't affect the businesses.
All right.
Like we just experienced. All right, well, thanks, everyone. Or thanks to Zach.
Yep.
And thanks to you.
Thank you very much.
For that. All right, Aaron, we've got some great views of our Main Street Bridge.
Yes. I have my notepad because I have some questions from Elise Tyler. I've witnessed that, so I'm ready to go here. Is this a good place? Was everyone able to hear Zach okay and see? Okay. Uh, my name is Aaron Lechance, and I'm here to talk about the Main Street Bridge Route 202 Reconstruction Project, which I have been involved with since I began with Hoyle Tanner in 2014, so that's about seven years now. It started even before me, and I know the community has been planning for this project. I think even in the late 90s it started, so it's been a long run, two years of construction. I've got a, a bunch of pictures. There's like 40 slides, but it's mostly pictures, so should be fun to look at that and give you an update on, on what we've done from a design standpoint over the course of the project, as well as construction over the last year, and what's to come in the next few weeks and, um, in the ensuing construction season through July or so of next year. So why don't you go ahead, Seth. Brief project history, um, at least from the engineering perspective. We started the engineering study, uh, through New Hampshire DOT. This was a, at least the bridge portion of the project was funded 80% by New Hampshire DOT and 20% by the town. Uh, the 202 project was 100% funded through DOT, but, um, so all of the engineering work was done in conjunction and reviewed by New Hampshire DOT. Again, started in 2009, and you can see all of these tasks, um, ending with, uh, start of construction in 2020. So some of the things that we've done in the last year in 2021, that's really where the bulk of the construction occurred. And you'll see the theme throughout a lot of these pictures, water. Water was a big challenge, and we'll talk about that. But, um, here we see some installation of shoring, um, that allows excavation of the soil to construct the foundation elements and, and de-watering. So that happened for both abutments this year. Placing concrete, you can see here, uh, the gray portion, that's part of the abutment, uh, stem, so the concrete was placed in, in three or four different, uh, major placements for the bridge, and, and the abutments were one of those. Uh, the northwest wing wall, so, um, the, the bank parcel is on the opposite, opposite side of the river here. This is the north, northwest wing. Obviously, that was constructed. King pile installation, there's the hub drill rig that we talked about. We'll talk a little more about that, uh, in a moment. But installing these, um, similar to what Zach was talking about, these, these large drilled foundations for, uh, large king pile elements, which, these permanent elements that you see here are part of the retaining wall that supports 202. And part of that project was, was an expansion of the width of 202 to accept, um, sidewalks on both sides, as well as some improved roadway geometry. So that, um, that's a big effort there. The second part of that retaining wall I was talking about are these steel sheets that slide in between those, those steel king piles that were shown in the previous photo. So, um, all that work was completed this year. Once those steel elements went in, that entire wall is being faced with granite facade, so that work, uh, is still underway, but a good portion of that has been completed over the past year, and, uh, I think it's looking really nice. A portion of the transcript dam required reconstruction, um, at the interface with that new retaining wall, so that work is complete, and this new riprap, um, riverbed protection has been, been installed. And if you see out there now, this masonry facade is installed maybe to about that elevation. Uh, that work is weather-dependent, so it will continue, um, as long as I can. Actually, I noticed, I came to the site before the meeting tonight, and they've got that whole area tented with some, some gas heaters running in there, so unless we get some very, very cold temperatures, I think that work will continue right through, um, into the winter months. Uh, the contractor was required, well, based on their approach to the project, they built a temporary platform to demolish the bridge. So that actually came out. They built a second type of support structure to build the new bridge, which we'll show some pictures of here. So the, the first structure came out, then the second structure went in. So this is all part of the formwork to, to support the, the formwork for the new bridge. That went in. And on top of that, um, all the formwork, the plywood that you see, to support the concrete for the new bridge, so that was done. On top of that was the masonry facade for the spandrel walls, um, which is what you see on the bridge, so that went in. Then we installed reinforcing steel, which is the, uh, provides the strength in the concrete for the structure. Lots of reinforcing steel, like this photo. I mean, those bars are six inches on center, there's a lot of steel in there. And then concrete placement, starting very early in the morning. The placement started at, uh, I believe it was 4:00 AM or so, and wrapped up around 7:00 PM. And, um, anecdotally, uh, the contractor wanted us to relay thanks to the townspeople for the donuts and, and the accommodations and the, and the patience. It, that was a big effort, that was a big day.
It was quite the attraction.
Yeah, it was. Many of you maybe saw the temporary, um, steel I-beams that supported these conduits. These carry, uh, I think it's, uh, consolidated communications and some other data providers. Uh, this is a major backbone of a communication network throughout at least this area, so we could not be interrupted at all. This is a major backbone of a communication network throughout at least this area, so it could not be interrupted at all during construction. These were encased in the original structure. They were broken out in 2020, supported with that, those temporary beams that you saw. And those will be placed in the sidewalk in the new structure. So there was a fair amount of work with moving those around and getting those ready to fit in the new structure. So that's complete now. And challenges, so, you know, I think most of us know some of the challenges this project had, but let's run through the first big one, which is COVID. Notice proceed was 2-5-2020, and COVID hit on 3-2-2020. So labor shortages, supply chain issues. The mason for this project was located in Vermont. He had challenges getting over to New Hampshire because of the, some of the orders between states and the limited ability to travel. So I guess we should have known, having this happen at the beginning of the project, that it wasn't going to be easy, but it didn't get much easier from here. High water throughout the project. This is a picture of the Christmas Day flood from last year. This July was the rainiest July that New Hampshire ever experienced with over eighteen inches of rain. Many times, the contractors' cofferdams were inundated and had to be dewatered multiple times. They overcame that, but it certainly slowed their progress down. That's a theme that we saw throughout the project. We said we weren't going to talk about it, but we know this happened here. This didn't cause a major delay to the progress, but it was a headache to deal with. It was a cost for the contractor. It did take their efforts away from some of the other work. This was an issue that happened early, actually in 2020. Part of the project was to slipline the old Granite Canal here with a new sixty-inch plastic pipe. During the course of completion of that work, we encountered some contaminated soils. We anticipated some quantity, and they were built into the contract, but the quantity exceeded what we expected, and dealing with that caused a bit of a delay. You may remember these frac tanks, those storage tanks that were on site for a while, those stored contaminated water that was dewatered out of the excavation. That was treated and taken care of. So, yeah, we were able to deal with this. We had provisions built into the contract, but the quantity and the duration was a little bit longer than anticipated. Back up one more, Seth. Had some challenges with utility relocations as well. The utilities did a great job working with us and getting some of their facilities moved ahead of time, but getting some of the other ones moved during the course of the project caused some delays. And other minor things like an unanticipated concrete slab in the river made installing some of those temporary work platforms that I showed earlier a bit challenging. So that's kind of what we've done this year and the challenges we've had, and where are we now? Where are we going? So, big picture is the Main Street Bridge will be open on 12/15/21, which is very important for the New Hampshire DOT project that we just heard about. It will be a little bit different than we envisioned. The contract documents envisioned originally three lanes, including that dedicated left-turn lane being open. At this point, it's going to be just two lanes, one inbound and one outbound lane. And the majority of the Route 202 work is going to move to spring and summer of next year. I don't have an update on the exact dates and durations, but the final completion milestone, which we had targeted for 5/1/22, will likely be in July sometime. We'll provide an update to the board once we have a formal change request from the contractor. But essentially, the bridge will be substantially complete with traffic, but the majority of the 202 topside work is going to be done in the spring, summer of '22. So there was some discussion earlier about the bridge, so this is the contractor's rough sketch of what the winter condition will look like for the Main Street Bridge. These gray lines represent concrete barriers. Got some drums here, and about twenty-eight foot, three inches between those barriers, enough for one inbound lane and one outbound lane. The temporary pedestrian bridge will remain in place through the duration of the project until the sidewalks are open. They'll be removed at the end. So a little bit different. We were hoping to have, or had structured the contract to have all three lanes of traffic open by December 15th, but due to all those challenges and the delays that the contractor has endured, this looks a little bit different than we envisioned. So why is it so important that we get that Main Street Bridge open to traffic? Well, it's because of the project that Zach talked about and the loss of this dedicated left-turn lane for that eastbound traffic onto 202. When the Main Street Bridge is closed, it diverts a lot more traffic through this intersection for folks that want to go downtown. So losing that dedicated left-turn lane would make this signal a very low level of service if the Main Street Bridge was to be closed. So we really pushed the contractor hard to get two lanes open so the DOT project can move forward with minimal disruption to traffic through here. And as I mentioned, what do we have coming in '22? Work will continue through winter months as conditions allow, as weather allows. I didn't mention, there's a portion of an existing boulder wall that runs to the south of the king pile wall that I showed you. It will be reconstructed and stabilized. There's a heavy-duty sidewalk on top of the retaining walls that supports a bridge rail that can be constructed, railing on top of that sidewalk. I mentioned the continued installation of the masonry facade on the retaining wall and removal of that temporary form work in the river that supports the form work for the bridge. So that will continue until weather gets prohibitive or the water level rises. And then what we're going to push to next spring, Seth, on the next slide. Once winter conditions are over, all the Route 202 storm drainage improvements, completion of the sidewalk on both the east and west sides of the road, roadway reconstruction, paving, line striping, and then at the end, the site cleanup, restoring the easement areas that were, the contractor was using, landscaping, planting trees, and plantings on various properties. And then some of the work in front of the library and the tie-in work has been transferred to this project because the library project finished up a little bit earlier. So that responsibility and those dollars moved over to this project. And then finally, project closeout, probably sometime in July, August, September timeframe. So what's traffic control going to look like on 202 next year? Some of those details we're still working out because I know you folks have experienced some of the delays and alternating one-way traffic as the contractor has done work out there. We want to make sure that those traffic queues don't interrupt or queue back into the Zach's project there, the 101 project. So looking at how that works, and don't have all the details, but there will be some amount of alternating traffic on 202 like you've seen. And some need for intermittent closures of the Main Street Bridge, for paving and some other operations for sidewalk construction. And we'll certainly coordinate, or the contractor will coordinate that work with the town and you folks ahead of time. And I guess we don't need a summary slide. I thought delete this one else, so. All right. I think that's it. I think maybe go to the last one. Seth, I think that's just our, yeah, and that's what I look like between April and October, a little bit different than now. But and then Dave Langley is the, he's the construction phase manager for the project. I've been the overall project manager and liaison with the town for many years. So ran through that really quick because I had a bunch of slides, but I'm happy to go back to any of them and answer any questions that you folks have.
Do you want the board question? I do have a question, and you may have already answered it. But you're saying that the 202 is still going to be one lane until sometime this spring when the project is complete?
202 will, it intermittent one-way traffic, so the contractor will come in in the morning and move it over.
Just like it is now?
Yes.
And that's going to persist through the spring?
It will, probably not a lot of that in the winter months. It'll pick back up again in the spring.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We've got some schedule revisions to make, but right now, we're looking at around like early part of April for sort of the substantial work resumption. But as Aaron indicated, there's been a lot of challenges in the project speed comp weekly, and then maybe some revisions that schedule coming down. Right now, the focus on getting those two lanes of traffic open.
Correct. So the great news is that there's not any really bad news. Right?
Yeah.
You said before you got up, and here's some great news.
Right.
So the great news is it's not bad news. It's good.
At this point, we comfortably said this.
That is great news, considering.
We've seen the light at the end of the tunnel.
Yeah.
There was a time in maybe September that I wasn't sure we would be having this conversation, so I'm glad to be here. To us, it's great news, I guess, being close to the project.
I would say, it is great news. It was very challenging here. To be close to where we expected to be at this point, I think is a real testament to incredibly professional contracting. I don't want to get ahead of myself. We have a ways to go in the contract, yes, but they are to be commended as is Hoyle Tanner and all the people that are involved with subs in the contract. It's been a difficult but rewarding project on that level.
Yeah, and I'll add that being Gladys Grabitz and watching this thing out my window for two years, it's been incredible to watch. Yeah, we just, you know, the guy doing the traffic there, everybody's been really professional. It's really, I'm impressed with the job.
Dave Langley's picture is on the screen, and I work closely with Dave every day. And I would also send a kudos out to Sean Reynolds, who's the resident engineer, project manager, who's in town, you can quote Museum Park across the street. He's in Peterborough every day managing the project on behalf of the town in the engineering firm, and he's had an outstanding job. But again, I don't want to get ahead of myself. We still have some billings to go and some contract work to do, so. But I would say at this point, you know, a very good construction team, a very, very qualified firms, and I've been super impressed with everybody's efforts on this project.
One more question. I didn't see in the list the mention of the crosswalk at the library.
Yes.
When might that go in? The end of the project or?
Yes, so that work will happen at the end. There is some regrading work that will happen, some tying work along the interface. There's a rapid flashing beacon. I think Tyler, when we talked about some of the easements on particularly your property, you had some questions about that. So that beacon will go in. There's a beacon at the southern end of the project that is actuated by pedestrians that want to cross.
So right at the Pine Street crossing there?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
That's great.
Flashing lights in the air, is that? Like Kenny Rogers' Real Street.
I have one question about detail. The sidewalk on the riverside, what's the treatment? Is that going to be chain link fence again?
There is a rail system. It's a, similar to the Elm, is it the Elm Street Bridge with the black rail?
Oh, great. That'll really clean up the.
Yes. That runs the entire project limits along the top of the retaining wall, wraps around, ties in with the stone parapet on the bridge.
Right.
And there's a short section on the western side, both near Center Town and the bank parcel.
And that will stop cars from going?
Yes, it's designed for a 54,000-pound impact, which is why we need to have on, you may see that the sidewalk along Route 202 is not your typical four, six-inch-thick sidewalk. It's eighteen inches thick by five and a half feet wide. That needs to be heavy enough and robust enough to resist the impact of a vehicle, so, yeah.
Anyone in the audience have any questions? No, no questions? Excellent.
I didn't even have to write them down.
Thanks, Seth.
Thank you.
Excellent.
The initial walkarounds for that bridge. I've been involved in it forever.
Are we planning any kind of ceremony concerning the opening of that bridge?
I do believe the board should take that up this winter, I mean, this spring. Certainly, I would encourage it, and there are people that are affiliated with the town, so I think that would deserve some recognition, namely Rodney Bartlett for all the work he's done with it for fifteen-plus years. Residents in town obviously have endured construction after construction, because what we, you didn't mention the Union Street Bridge too. But that and Main Street Bridge, that will be two other state bridges, so residents in town have endured it, and I think we should celebrate this when we get done.
And Grove Street.
Wilder Street Bridge.
And the Old Street. And then the one down by River, right?
We've got a lot, a lot more room to go.
You were there, did you miss out on getting your handprint in the concrete that day? You know, I must have, after very long.
I got a quick question. I may have missed it. When we open Main Street Bridge in another week or so, is that going to be two lanes or just one lane?
Two.
Two lanes, two.
It is going to be two. I heard it was just going to be one out.
Well, that's more the good news.
That's the great news, yeah. And then so the parking will stay perpendicular, no more angled? Wasn't it angled before? Parking?
It was.
Yeah.
Yes, it was.
On the Roy side, it was angled.
I believe that former town administrator, who were former board members, committed to doing a downtown parking plan at the conclusion of the Main Street Bridge project.
Yes.
So, you know, that is a topic to take up as we move into spring as well.
That whole section of the main, the whole downtown, you ain't too much of.
Before all this started, I think it was Diana on the Roy side and parallel on Center Town side. You only had two or three spots there?
I think the contractor and our engineers and everybody involved in the project, I think we should also thank the merchants who have been right there through the whole thing and been incredibly patient and have been incredibly cordial. They called, they talked to me about the issues, and they deserve some credit for having endured a difficult and challenging tight construction site. So just want to throw that out there as well.
Yeah, glad you did. Thank you. All right, thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
All right.
Great, everyone.
Thank you. There's still some more exactly left, if you wanted to hang out.
I'll save my excitement for when I'm here, and we're dedicated.
You can always watch it on TV.
Please, anyone who's wondering, we're going to skip the EDA and Housing Committee Subcommittee discussion. Have the request of that committee and the EDA, they wanted to come at a later date. So up next, we'll hear from the group interested in a vote to endorse New Hampshire businesses and a path to citizenship.
This is a more official, yes.
Oh, hi, welcome.
A more official copy than you thought, right?
Right.
Thank you so much for putting us on the agenda, and thank you for considering this endorsement to our members of Congress in support of businesses and immigrants in our Peterborough community and beyond. I'm not a business owner, and I'm not an immigrant, but I'm an ally and I'm a consumer. And as a relative newcomer here from Iowa, I love Peterborough. It's a great place to live. It's a welcoming community and a vibrant place to be. We do see the Help Wanted signs that have been up during COVID, lots of them. And the activists in here in New Hampshire in immigration circles tell me there are substantial numbers of immigrants who find that their immigration status is a barrier to helping fill those jobs. And we know from surveys that seventy percent of New Hampshire voters support a pathway to citizenship. So we urge you to support this. It's a win-win-win. It's for the businesses, for the immigrants, and for us as consumers who love the things that we're used to having, like open restaurants and other kinds of amenities. So we urge you to support this. At this point, it covers four groups, which is always in flux. It's part of the reconciliation package, and if it is separated out of that, it will be a separate challenge to get passed. But the four groups that are covered right now are the Dreamers, the Farm Workers, the TPS, which is Temporary Protected Status Folks, and the Essential Workers. And that would be locally, that would be statewide. Essential Workers is an umbrella term. It encompasses mostly sectors from energy to defense to agriculture. And TPS are people who are protected because the area that they came from, there is armed conflict or natural disaster. So in appreciation of your time and agenda, I won't take more of your time to describe the things that are in the letter that you received, but I would like to acknowledge that there are several people here in support of this and have them stand and say their name, introduce themselves. So could you start with Sandra?
Sandra Garcia, I live in Peterborough.
Rick Latham, Peterborough.
Anne Latham, Peterborough.
Corinne Anderson, Peterborough.
Kath Allen, Peterborough. And I wanted to add, what Julie's saying, I've been involved with Grand State Hortouting Magazine Project for several years. And then last year, I started working for them. And when I go out in the communities, I'm running into people from Africa. I cannot talk to them. I have to have an interpreter. People from Bosnia. And now I can't go out in the streets of Manchester working because my college Spanish is not very good. And there's a very, very big need for somebody to be interpreting in Spanish to talk with these people. We've been doing calls, and a lot of our people we get connected through to are very much in support of immigrants and undocumented immigrants and being able to work, to be able to get in line for what other people have. So this is very, and this is, all my calls are people in New Hampshire, or somebody who has moved out of the state. So we've been doing this diligently twice a week since July, and I was doing other stuff in May for the. And I was doing other stuff in May for the organization. So we have a lot of people here who could be working and contributing, who can't, and others who need the help, who can start to do that, but they need to be able to get hired. They need to be able to get into the system. Thank you. Do you have any questions or?
Sure. What is the resistance to this? What kind of, who would have a problem with this? I mean, why wouldn't this be a good thing?
Well, you know, in the past, the problem was always that they were taking jobs away from other workers. And that argument has gone by the waters. And with the argument that, oh, these people are coming here to take from us, they want to be on welfare. I think that the level of interest in working among most of the immigrants that I've run into is very high. They want to be self-supporting, but they can't because they can't get a card, what do you call it?
Green card.
Green card. And they're held up and they are dependent upon not-for-profits that are helping them. They're not eligible for most kinds of public assistance. So the argument against it, does anybody have any other ideas on that?
Well, part of it is, if you're an immigrant, Senator Shahin, Senator Hassan, for you. But they have not come through on backing undocumented immigrants who have left because of natural disasters, because of wars. This summer, or late summer into early fall, I met with five men from Afghanistan. One came out on one of the last planes that Biden had coming out of Afghanistan. If we wouldn't be here. Two of these men's wives are still in Afghanistan. So there is a big problem between the government and people who are desperately needing to settle here and very much want to be here.
So this letter is going to land on the desks of Senator Shahin and Senator Hassan? Have her go or?
We have, yes. We have people calling their offices when we put the calls through or give them the number, depending on what timeframe you're talking and what kind of a system we're calling off of. So we're putting the pressure on Senator Shahin and Senator Hassan. They need to be backing these immigrants. And they do back immigrants. We have the undocumented who are in a tight spot. There was a fellow recently, him, his wife, their children. They got out as fast as they could out of the Mideast. They don't have any documents on two of their children. And somebody said, well, let them go back and get it. But how do you go back where you mistake to get documentation?
Do they have a lot of places where you can go and just get easy paperwork in war-torn countries? I don't think so. Any other questions?
I have a very quick question. I must, I'll tell you, I support this forward. My wife and I have been involved in various projects, you might say, in terms of immigration. What a mess. But in any case, mechanically, this is, this letter is directed at business leaders.
Directed from?
It's directed to ask them to support it to the members of Congress.
Right. So are you looking for a letter from us in support of this letter or in support of the project?
I think that it helps to know that the community leaders are behind this because they have a concern for the businesses in their community and because they have a concern for immigrants. Would be my take on it.
No, I agree. I agree. I think that's the approach to make. But it's not, you're not asking us to actually sign this letter as business leaders. You're asking us to compose a letter of support.
Yes. And if you should want to pass this on to anyone who is a business owner, that's fine too.
Oh, yeah, we'll do that. We'll do that through the EDA. I'll bring this up the next meeting in January sometime.
Bill, in Manchester, and rest the board, in Manchester, we have people going door-to-door, talking to business owners, asking them about backing the immigrants.
Okay. Specifically, so I'll bring this up as a topic. So you're, would you like us to compose that letter? Or would you compose that letter for us and we'll sign it? Does that make sense?
What would you have?
Well, I think you could, you could probably articulate the issue better than I, certainly. I don't know. What do you guys feel comfortable with?
Well, I have the same question since we are a town municipality, so business. But it should come in support of our businesses.
Yep.
So, right, it would only take minor wording changes, I would think.
I would think that what I would probably do is take that letter and just make tweaks. And I would think you might be more comfortable doing that yourself.
Okay. Do we, is it a Word document that you sent us by email?
I think there is.
So we could edit that and then go to that.
I'll make sure I send another one out tomorrow.
So we'd be, we'd be in support of our local businesses who have supported this.
Well, you don't know.
Well, this is coming from businesses. The letter that's actually going to the senators and congressmen.
I think your letter to them is that the select board, either individually or as a board, is in support of Pathway to Citizenship because we see our businesses and our community and our region and our state as needing these workers. We also are in support for humanitarian and common sense reasons. But it's simply to say our businesses are struggling and anything we can do to have more workers at a time like this is important.
So do we, I know that, like, Rivermead and all the nursing homes and retirement facilities are all on board with this, correct? Has anybody talked to anybody at the hospital?
I haven't. I had this.
As a Vegas employer, that'd be a good one.
Okay. I'll give them a call tomorrow. All right, being sort of new to the community, I'm frankly a little sensitive about this, but I'll do that.
Sure. You know, I'm sure a bunch of people are watching TV right now and catching up. So I would make a motion that we, the select board, would compose a letter in support of this to send to the members of Congress.
You may have this one in support.
Well, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Also. And all is in favor?
Yeah.
All right, yeah, we'll work with town ministry and Dave to write something up. By you, we'll all read it and make sure we're on board with what it says.
Thank you very much.
Just to say that I generally don't sign on for like a national political type of event. And we actually don't in general without putting it to our voters first. But this is obviously such a dramatic need that I think waiting until May is.
It's kind of nice to sort these things out from politics too. I mean, we say it's political, but.
Well, it is. No matter what way it's placed in.
But that's humanitarian.
I would say the Grand State Organizing Project is not political. When I read, the people on the phone tried to tell me, you're Democrat, you're Republican, what are you? And we are not. We're nonpartisan.
Yeah.
Even though.
I get it, but you're sending a letter to senators and congressmen.
Right, but it wouldn't matter if they were independents, Republicans, Dems, whatever. It's just they're who we have to deal with.
Uh-huh. I get it.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much for that, Chris.
And when might this become a solution?
Yep.
Like, when is it, when can they start working?
All right, how soon do we need that letter?
This is all underway right now. It's part of the budget, which has been held up. I, it's hard for me to say. I would say that it would be something to get out fairly immediately.
We're not expecting to vote on it until beginning of January, but still, that's not very far ahead.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, we're like ball bearing in the hospital, pretty important places for you to go see. Lori Chingress at the hospital is the person you want to talk to there, I think, at least to start.
Or Cynthia.
I mean, in this letter, it specifically mentions hospitals.
We did have one person among our group that called and was going to call. I don't know how that came out, but.
We got right to the select board, man. We should give the hospital, right?
Carol?
Carol Nelson. I will just say that a local business owner recently commented to me that if he could take a bus and drive it down to Guatemala, Belize, anywhere in South America, and fill it with workers and bring it back legally, he would. He's so desperate for workers. Obviously can't do that, but if he could, he would in a heartbeat. Bill, it's only political in that they have to reach out to the people in Washington to make a difference. What they're asking and what they're doing is not political.
Look, I totally understand that. But in the world as a whole, something that has to get voted on by the federal government is political in nature for the average person. I understand it. You understand it. But it's a political issue. Immigration.
It's part of our effort.
I'm not saying that's a good or bad thing. All I'm saying is that it's a political.
But the way that you started it, you started it as, my impression was, it's bad because it's political. That's my interpretation. Right or wrong?
Well, I think that one of the purposes of doing this letter is to let our legislators know we have their back. They tell us all the time that they hear from anti-immigration people in larger numbers than they hear from pro-immigration people. And they need to know that the 70% support is real and that this is not a poison pill.
Yeah.
That it's acceptable.
It'd be a pretty hard argument to make against it at this point, since every business in the entire country needs people to work. That's how you'll find out how political it is if somebody's against it, right?
And it wasn't that long ago where it was common practice for businesses to go, to, you know, to get immigrants to work landscaping and, you know, pay for their visa or however it was, the temporary, you know, and house them and all that. So that went away in recent political climate, so.
I wonder how they used to do that. Because like Alton Barnes, he said, he used to bring Jamaicans up for the whole entire apple season. Those guys were awesome.
Temporary work visas.
So, all right, well, maybe, maybe it's, do some good. Right, and we had minutes from November 16th and 23rd. I'd make a motion to approve those minutes.
I want to accuse myself on the second.
All right. All is in favor for the 16th?
All right.
Five. And for the 23rd?
All right.
Great, thank you all. Very thorough. Anything else to add? Any other great news?
There's plenty. I should make a, before the meetings, sorry to talk about whether the board is interested in the 21st.
Right.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
You're welcome. Come again.
I, no. I think we won't have a full agenda right now. I think there's any, you know, people need a break. Holidays are coming up.
Well, the reason, the reason I brought it up is the Community Power Task Force has been meeting on a weekly basis and in particular, meeting with three different providers of electricity that would provide to the consumers in town. And they're completing their second round of conversations and are going to select one of those three providers based on a set of criteria that they've developed. And are eager to present that to us and get our approval because the next step, of course, that would be to actually put together a community power plan, which then will be presented at town meeting. So it needs to get on the warrant. So their request was if we can, if we're flexible enough and can hold off and maybe make the decision by next week, that was their request. Now it's weak. We can deny that request on that. I know that I will be here, but I don't necessarily.
Is that we have a group that's trying to force us to have a meeting?
And then, well, they're eager to, they're eager to.
Well, I don't think the fourth is that far off.
Well, I'm fairly certain that nothing's going to happen between the 21st and the fourth anyways. That's right. True. I mean, the nature of Christmas holiday, I doubt any age of stuff is going to be going on. And I'm not going to be here on the 21st anyways.
Oh, okay. It was my.
And I'm not changing my plans. It's just that somebody wants to.
I promised them that I'd bring it before the board.
Is it there?
My inclination is to put it off. That'll give them more time to actually make a good decision and prepare the remarks.
Let's suffer. They certainly don't want to force it, right?
So, yeah. All right, well, that sounds good then.
So the general consensus is that we will not have a meeting on the 21st.
Sure.
But we will put them on the agenda as requested on the first meeting, the first time of the year.
Yeah. Yeah, we did.
I think that's, I think that's fair enough. Thank you for your consideration.
And I do not have any updates from any of the committees liaison team. Anything else?
I had one meeting since our last meeting, and that was the RAP Committee last week. And we went, you know, over the budget, which I think is like up 34 bucks over last year prior to the budget process. So looking good over there.
Only they sold one more cunning in the column.
Or even two.
Either that or a cookie sale, maybe.
Some of those.
Really? That's encouraging. Besides the Community Power Task Force, I'm also working with the Peterborough. Getting late today, I was up to community this morning. But they call the prep, the prep team. And they're looking at overall energy use around town. And community power is part of that to go electric, go fully electric by 2030. And with renewables. And by 2050, replace all of the kind of fuels for transportation, so on and so forth. And they're developing that. So the DGN regularly, there's not much to report at this point. Other than that, the school advisory, the compound advisory, the Senate Board Advisory Committee met a couple of weeks ago. It was a bit of a disarray because of their budgetary process right now. So there was not a large report. That's where we're at.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, second. Thanks.
Major.
So adjourned we are.